And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting this December 4th, 2014. I'll ask Mr. Krupp, our county administrator, to do the roll.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Of course, we are joined this morning with Kathleen Rathdeter from the County Council's office. And to my left, as always, is Mary Rathke, our clerk to the board. Let me start with a roll with Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. Would you please all rise and join with me in pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
So, Mr. Krupp, we have a presentation today.
We do, and I'm going to invite Erica Silver, who is with our Health, Housing and Human Services Department and manages our Veterans Program, to give you a presentation and a video about the POW MIA flag and also talk about our efforts to fly the flag here on the County Red Soils Campus. So Erica, and I understand you have some guests to introduce as well.
Yeah, we have some special guests with us this morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. The POW MIA flag honors those in the military who were prisoners of four or classified as missing in action. Earlier this year, Commissioners approved the acquisition of this special tribute. The flag will be flown on specified dates at all county buildings and facilities. A little background, the concept of this special flag was developed by the wife of an officer listed as missing in action during the Vietnam War. And in 1998, Congress approved the flag to be flown over federal buildings and facilities. I'd like to note that the idea to fly this special flag came from one of our Veteran Service Officers, Janice Raisel. The flag first flew over our county buildings last month on Veterans Day and will now permanently fly each year on six recognized days. In 2015, these dates are Armed Forces Day, Saturday, May 16th, Memorial Day, Monday, May 25th, Flag Day, Sunday, June 14th, Independence Day, Saturday, July 4th, National POW MIA Recognition Day, Friday, September 18th, and Veterans Day, Wednesday, November 11th. Public and Government Affairs has prepared a special video about the flag that we will now watch.
Since World War II, there have been an estimated 80,000 cases of unaccounted-for soldiers as either prisoners of war or individuals missing in action. Many families have since been left without closure, of knowing the depths of sacrifice made under the American flag and everything it represents. In extending that symbol for those lost in absentia, Evelyn Gub, wife of a POW serviceman, along with Newt Heasley, designed the POW MIA flag to stand as a symbol of our nation's concern and commitment to resolving as fully as possible the fates of Americans still prisoner, missing, and unaccounted for. Since it first flew over the White House in 1989, the POW MIA flag remains and reminds all of the price of peace and the indefinable sacrifice that it maintains.
They say that the greatest casualty is being forgotten, and I think the flag goes a long way to ensure that it's not, people are not forgotten. It's the day that two Army officers showed up on their front doorstep to tell them that their, you know, his brother, that my grandmother's son was missing, and just how confused they were. Like, "What do you mean, missing? He's either alive or he's dead." Well, we can't, you know, we can't confirm that. He was last seen boarding an ambulance. The ambulance was never accounted for. And just to be left with that state of confusion and uncertainty, I think would just be awful. When I see the flag, it goes beyond just the prisoners and the missing, but I think it's also telling the people that, you know, there is a price for peace and there's a price for freedom. And even as we move into peacetime, I think it's, it'll be good for us to remember that there is indeed a price that our American citizens paid.
My father-in-law was in World War II, and he was over in Germany. And basically, he was part of the push, you know, with Patton's unit and all, way in front, trying to get into, go through Europe and get into Germany. And his unit got so far out in front that they got separated and they were captured. So, I know my father-in-law was in prison camp, but it was only about a month. And he never talked too much about it. He thought that Hogan's Heroes was definitely not the way prison camps were. He couldn't leave, that's for sure. A lot of people didn't talk too much about that kind of stuff. You know, there really is no way to express their loss. And a lot of times, you know, fathers were lost, children never did meet their fathers. I don't know how you can kind of express your appreciation.
The POW and the MIA's, they are a separate group out there that, you know, we can't understand. I can't understand it. And so, I think we need to, you know, recognize that. You just, you have a feeling always in the back of your mind for that POW MIA and their families. You know, they, they never know. You know, they don't have that closure. Also knowing that it's an extra symbol above and beyond the American flag, that the POW flag is that people are remembering and we're not forgetting.
Across the county, the POW MIA flag will fly as a reminder and symbol to all who pass, of the commitment, support, and respect Clackamas County has for the members and families of our armed forces, of our veterans, prisoners of war, and those still unaccounted for. You are not forgotten.
If our camera people are listening, and they usually do, it might be great to pan in on the stars here. Justin, Jeff, and Mike, right in the front row. Well done, well said. Erica?
Yeah, absolutely. And I'm very honored that Mike, Jeff, and Justin were all able to join us this morning. And Mike Clark is an Army veteran who served as a door gunner. Jeff Jorgensen is a Navy veteran who served as a maintenance officer. And Justin Gombos is an 11-year Navy veteran. And as you saw in the video, his uncle is still missing. So if any of you would like to say a few words, please feel free, come on up.
Maybe they said enough on the film.
I would just, really, speaking for all of us, I think it's just a, we got our POWs from, you know, forever, and being a Vietnam veteran, and as we all have, that also the POWs, you know, are forgotten. And I think all of us who have served consider us a little bit of a POW because of the ones that are missing, and we served in a war, we served in that time, because we are still part of that group, and we will always be that way forever, whether we knew one or we didn't. And I guess just a short note, during my Veterans Program, I had a World War II veteran get up and speak about 10 years ago now. He was four years in Japanese, and everybody was talking about awards and medals, and he says, "The biggest medal that any one of you can wear," and I would hope to see all of you have it next time I come in here, "the biggest medal you can wear is wear the American flag." Try that. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Smith?
I've known Mike Clark for many, many years. He hails from Alalen. When he was a teacher there, he always had a special Veterans Day tribute that he got the middle schoolers involved with. And Paul Savis and I attended this year because Mike is retired and he's come back, and it was quite the program. And Paul and I were really honored to be able to offer a few words of what the county's doing, and I mentioned the flag. And when I was speaking in front of people, they're going, "Oh, wow, you know, the new flag." And the program that Mike puts on is quite the learning experience for our youth. I learn things every year that I come. They do reports, and they give speeches, and they stand up in front of a huge audience in honor of our veterans. And Mike, I really want to thank you for doing that. You don't get paid extra for that. It's your little bit of public service. I hope you're able to continue doing that in the future. Thank you.
You're asking for a lot of commitments here, aren't you? All right, well, thank you, Erica. And I think that was extremely, these lights are, whoa, it's like a Christmas tree.
Thank you very much for your time, and thank you, TIO.
Hold on for just a second, please. Additional Commissioners, Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to thank Mike, too. I've known him for years and years and years, and would go into your class doing leadership talks, and have attended a number of your Veterans Day. Didn't make it this go-round, but I, hopefully, planning in the future, I can get there. But they've always been wonderful, and I bet they miss you in the school district. Just saying. Oh, good.
Commissioner Savis?
Just wanted to say one other thing that wasn't said, and that was the, what I thought was pretty touching, was some of the kids and the family, the family perspective of those that are serving today. And I think you, some of your students, or some of the students there who spoke to that, it was pretty passionate, but I think it was something that we need to remember, that we have people out there serving today as well. And that was a great acknowledgement as well. So thanks for doing that, Mike.
Okay. I think it's time for what we call here affectionately a photo op. So we're going to come down, and, you know, the stars can certainly come forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, you know, the fact of the matter is, is there any other veterans in the room? Come on up, you guys. That was wonderful. And so it's time for Citizens Communication. And we will start with two gentlemen, Mike Hunt, Les Poole. Mike Hunt, not here? Les?
Good morning. So I get six minutes if he doesn't show up?
Yeah, sure.
I'll be quick. That was a great presentation. That really hit home, and that's one of the neatest things I've seen in a while. Everyone should feel good about that. I was too young to go to Vietnam, but I was old enough to know what was going on. And of course, I had family members that were over there, and some of the, you know, when you're 10 years old and you're playing football with kids that are 17, and you're looking up to them, and then all of a sudden, you're 12 years old, and they're 19, and they're in Vietnam. If anybody would like to have a town hall about whether or not 18 years of age, you're ready to go do that, I mean, it, you know, I'm getting a little into the weeds, but I think you all know what I'm trying to say. And, you know, Mac Woods can't see out of one eye, and that's one reason why he's so passionate. He carries a scar with him that I never had to endure. I wanted to talk today real briefly about the bomber. I'm involved in preserving the plane. I hope folks keep going to the restaurant. People think it's closing. The plane's being dismantled, it's being hauled off. What's really happening is it's heading for Salem. It's going to be down at the airport there in South Salem. They've really embraced the project. It's a long ways away from completion, but we're going to save that girl. And Punky Scott and her family have done a lot for the community, as we all know. And I just hope everyone keeps patronizing the restaurant and knows that the plane is not going to just weather away into nothing. Last subject, near and dear to me, is of course Metro. I don't know how much more the county can do to address the narrow focus of the climate smarts solution. It's basically a planning, in my personal opinion, they're looking for more money and an excuse for what they've been doing. And Metro is facilitating the growth boundary. Metro's facilitating light rail. Metro's the most powerful entity in the region, and today at 2:00, they'll have a meeting, and no one will be there. But they're on the front page, finally. It's taken us a long time. There they are, front page. This, the unique thing about what's in the Tribune is that there's a report that you can access there. That report was not written by a nutcase like me. No, that was written by a PSU professor. And PSU is where they have the Urban Studies Institute. They're teaching planning there, they're doing some things right, but they're, let's just say there's a reason why the street cars and the light rail and millions of dollars are rolling through there. So you've got someone, once again, pointing out that they, this is over the top, and we need real in Metro. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Les. And so I will call up Mr. Mac Woods and Mr., I guess it's Dude, Dude Torvend. So why don't you go ahead and have a seat.
You guys are famous. You got your picture taken today. Yeah, with one of the kids I put in the Navy. He's got, he don't have as much hair today as he had when I put him in.
You recruited him, that's what I heard.
Chair Ludlow. I'm Mac Woods, and Commissioners, and also all veterans out there that listen in on the well, good job that the folks doing the videos do, I compliment them and wish them a Merry Christmas. So this goes out to you and all veterans in this great state of Oregon. We need to know more about our taxes in Oregon as the politicians spend, spend, spend more money on non-essentials and waste, not only in Clackamas County, but all over this great state of Oregon. The feds have nothing to do with our taxes in Oregon, as Commissioner Schrader last week announced. However, it's time to educate the politicians in Oregon about our taxes and what they do not know. Or should I say, we should feed them a little truth serum? When they ramble on and on about what they're doing for veterans when they are running for election, to drum up votes from the voters so they can get into one of the high-paying political seats, then they forget about veterans until the next election. With this opening statement, I'm asking every veteran, Army, Air Force, Marine Corps, Navy, and even the Coast Guard, to ask them, I'm talking about politicians, what they're doing for the veterans in Oregon, and you'll see that blank stare. We learned from the last election, only a month ago, that our governor was re-elected after wasting over $161 million on revised Oregon that failed. And he was re-elected. Also, don't forget about the big waste on the pink elephant right close to us, yes, the CRC, over 30 million, and the pinky is now dead, as we all know. Now, my fellow veteran friends, it's wake-up time for us to wake them up on what they don't know about veterans, more specifically on what the rules are on taxes, especially on what they refer to as the veteran's exemption, which was, is only a drop in the bucket compared to what we pay. And it's different from what it was when it was created in 1955. We need to know and understand it and revise it, drum up some lobbyists to get the things back to what it was in 1955. That's for veterans that are rated 40% or more disabled and is everything except exempt or exemption. That's for veterans with missing limbs and other parts, and widows are veterans that paid the ultimate sacrifice, just like Tyrone Woods, who graduated right here, Oregon City High School, in 1992. Every veteran should go to their very own county tax office and get a copy of what they call the veteran's exemption for the absolute facts to educate the high-dollar politicians and vote them out. It's the perfect time to get tuned in for voters in Oregon for the next election in less than two years now. Thank you. Merry Christmas. It's only, it's less than a month away. There's 14 veterans not coming home for Christmas, I learned Saturday.
Appreciate that. And you really got a festive sweater on today, too, Mac.
I didn't knit it. A friend.
All right. Yes, sir?
Who, me?
Yeah. And move that, now move that microphone a little.
I want you guys look at the video.
You know what, we want.
I can't do that. Yeah, we won't be able to see much, and we want the public to see it, because that's part of public testimony, so.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you tell us about the video?
Okay, I live at.
What's your name?
Dude Torvend.
Thank you.
I live at, up in Colton, and the neighbor guy has 3,000 to 5,000 honeybee hives, 600 feet from us. And our pigs can't eat because they fill the trough, and it's just, you can't go outside, you can't have a picnic, you can't do anything when the weather's hot. So I was just wondering if you guys could either shut down, he's got 15 acres, and he brings 40-foot semi-full of sugar water and feeds them. The ground can't support them. And in the spring, he takes them to California, then he takes them to Washington for the apple orchards. And I understand they got to have honeybees, but I don't believe you need to have 3,000 to 5,000 hives on like five acres. So it's up to you guys, because there ain't nothing I can do.
Now, Dude, I think you've been in contact with a person who helps us out named Kimberly DeSantis, is that correct?
I guess.
Yeah, a lady, a lady in the Commissioner's office, and she's got your contact information. And so what we're going to probably do is give that information to our Planning and Zoning Department. Have you contacted them yet?
God, they just say it ain't nothing they can do. There ain't no ordinances or anything on honeybees.
Huh. Interesting.
Well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Because it's an allowed agricultural use, I believe, is why.
I understand that. I mean, I, I don't mind the bees, but he should only have 300 hives there instead of 3,000.
Have you talked to him directly?
Uh, yeah, I mean, he knows what's going on.
Have you talked to him directly?
Yeah, I mean, he's our neighbor, but he just, if you get stung, or, he just goes, "How do you know it's my bee?" I mean, he has a bad attitude. And I understand that, too, because everybody is always after him for his bees. So.
Who, just out of curiosity, it doesn't really matter, because you own the property, you own property, who was there first, the bees or you?
Well, his bees are domesticated, so my dad owned the property since 45. And so we've been there before the bees. He's only been there like 30 years or something.
Only, yeah. Okay, well, Kimberly has your contact information, and it's interesting enough, so I think we'll all be curious as to what our planning staff says to us about the happening. But we'll look into it, and we will, again, I think Kimberly will contact you yet again after we look into it. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
All right.
I was thinking about maybe raising honeybees, but not if it's going to make my neighbors mad.
Well, if you only have a few, it's no big deal. I mean, they're, they're a mild bee, they don't attack everything.
They don't.
But when he's sucking honey from them, they're meaner.
Really?
So.
So is there a buzz going on all the time?
Oh, man.
Yeah.
We're not talking about marijuana today. Anyway, yes, thank you, Dude, I appreciate you coming in.
So I can go now?
Yes, sir. Yeah, like running, I got a hold on you here. Merry Christmas.
Even though I'm just a dumb logger, I'm not missing anything.
I think you're doing fine. Thank you. All right. That is the end of Citizen Communication, and so we will go into the Consent Agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the Consent Agenda by title. Oh, she was helping somebody through the door, so, here we go.
The Consent Agenda. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under County Council, approval of a lease amendment by and between TS Equities LLC and Clackamas County for the District Attorney's Office. Under Business and Community Services, acceptance of a specialty crop block grant and approval of an agreement with Oregon Department of Agriculture for the county's ag investment plan strategy. Approval of an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and Metro, authorizing access to Metro's River Island Natural Area through Barton Park. Under the Development Agency, approval of Amendment Number Five to the Agreement for the redevelopment of land in the Clackamas Town Center area between Clackamas County Development Agency and MD Partners LLC. And underwater environment services, we have approval of a professional services agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and CH 2M Hill Engineers for the Hoodland Master Plan and Wastewater Services Project, and that completes our Consent Agenda.
All right. Any Commissioners wish to remove any item? I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Bernard, and second one by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes 5-0. And it's time for the County Administrator Update.
So this is a whirlwind meeting this morning. I think this may actually be a record.
I think so.
It could do it. I do have several items to share with you, though. And first, I just wanted to say just how grateful I am, and I know that you are, to have learned that the person who is suspected of fatally shooting our Clackamas County employee, Grady Waxenfelder, has been apprehended. Dirk White was wounded during an altercation with the Los Angeles Police late Sunday evening. And it is my hope, and I know your hope, that this brings some measure of closure and comfort to Grady's family, friends, and colleagues here at Clackamas County. here at Clackamas County. I also want to thank our law enforcement professionals here and in Los Angeles for their efforts in bringing Mr. White to justice. On another note, acknowledging the good work of our county sheriff's office, a team of officers participated in No Shave November, and they were, they had a goal of raising $3,000 for the American Cancer Society. Well, they doubled that.
Wow.
And raised $6,000. That really represents the 12th most successful company beard fundraising effort nationwide. So they did a really good job at that. The most interesting thing about all this, of course, is that uniformed members of the sheriff's office aren't usually allowed to grow facial hair. So in some cases, for some of these employees, this was the first time in 20 years they were allowed to grow a beard. And for their prize for participating is they get to keep their beard through the end of the year to the new year.
I'm sure their wives are enthralled about that.
I bet you so, yeah. And the other piece of good news I have to share with you is that, this is actually, I understand, for the first time in recent history, we have issued all of what we call the Component Unit Audit Reports prior to December 1st. That's really good work. A special congratulations to Krista Wolf for her efforts and the rest of our financial services team. But, you know, the component units are those, those special purpose districts, the Tri-City Service District, Clackamas County Service District Number One, NCPRD, the Development Agency. But this is a really big achievement. It allows us now to focus 100% of our remaining time on our efforts to complete the county audit and the comprehensive annual financial report. The audits for the Development Agency and the Parks and Recreation District were completed and filed, and no major issues to report. The Workforce Investment Council provided their audited financial statements on time. Housing Authority and our Water Environment Services Department were both able to issue their financials prior to Thanksgiving. That's especially notable on the part of Water and Environment Services because they've had considerable turnover in their administrative staff here over the course of the past couple of months. So I really want to express a word of appreciation to them. So we are currently on track for issuing documents in December, prior to the deadline of December the 31st. Very happy about all of that. And then finally, I did receive a preliminary 2014 population estimate as of July 1, 2014, from Portland State University. This is for all of Clackamas County, and we presently have 391,525 individuals estimated to be living here in Clackamas County. That's approximately 15,000-person increase from what was our certified census figure in April of 2010. And so we'll have the certified figures posted and available to us by the middle of December, December 16th. So I wanted to share that with you.
You know, we're gonna set a record and tell you guys it's loquacious, right? No, anyway. So, all right, it's time for commissioners' communication. So I'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, one of the things I wanted to mention, I did receive an email from Alicia Hammel, who is the executive director of the Historical Outreach Foundation, and we are on the road to having Brigadier James B. Thayer, Oregon Military Museum, and the Veterans Legacies Database here in Clackamas County at Camp Withacum. In any case, she sent a week, an email that I'd like to read, and it says, "This weekend, join the Historical Outreach Foundation as we honor two of Oregon's military heroes. The 41st Infantry Division was an Oregon-Washington Idaho-in-Montana National Guard Infantry Division, considered the best National Guard Infantry Division in the United States prior to World War II. On September 16, 1940, the 41st was activated for federal duty, fighting through New Guinea, the Philippines, and on to occupation duty in the Hiroshima District of Japan. The 41st was deactivated on December 31, 1945. After 45 months of active duty, they're known in Oregon history as the Jungleers, because they really did some heavy-duty jungle fighting in the tropics in the Philippines. On Friday, Oregon will bury one of those 41sters. Tommy Moyer, an Olympic-level boxer, was activated with the 41st, earning a Bronze Star for his entrepreneurial initiative to convert a defunct factory to make bread to feed the troops. Tommy came home after the long war and became an Oregon icon, helping it to build Portland into the city it is today. On Sunday, another 41ster, Leonard DeWitt, the last living distinguished service cross recipient, will have a statue in his likeness unveiled at 3:30 PM at 400 Northeast Baker Street in McMinnville. Leonard was initially put in for a Medal of Honor for single-handedly saving his entire company from a Japanese invasion. General MacArthur downgraded his MOH to a DSC, leaving the 41st with no medals of honor awarded during World War II. The statue was created by Chad Caswell, a young artist from Hood River. The monument will showcase an Oregon hero and inspire young and old to honor and respect those who have served this country. These are just two of the many stories of Oregon's rich military past. As you join us in remembering these two veterans, we invite you to explore our history further and contact them at the Historical Outreach Foundation in Camp Withacum. Thanks.
Well done.
Very nice.
All right, and Tudi.
Thank you. I'd like to congratulate my fellow commissioners. We have been doing at the county, I think, some very good work regarding our land use hearings and the promotion of the businesses in Clackamas County. This week, we approved the lavender farm to continue in its operations. That is on several hundred acres in rural Clackamas County. They grow and process lavender and ship it. And to my just total amazement, that's a $70 million business. And I'm just so appreciative that the commissioners unanimously gave them approval through a very dicey land use process. It's something that, for me, those are decisions that I just live for. Another one was the PGE Bull Run property up by Roslin Lake. A private entity has acquired that whole area, and they want to turn it into a museum, a bed and breakfast, no trace camping, and bring in youth and teach them many, many things. They went through a long process, land use process, and asked if they could do that. And I was very appreciative that we could also give them the go-ahead on that. And the reason why I'm saying this is because as elected, we often say, "Yeah, this county is open for business, and we want your businesses to come here." These are just two examples of that where the rubber meets the road, and yes, we are willing to do the hard work to attract and keep businesses in Clackamas County. So I hope people are listening and are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tudi. All right, Jim. Oh, Commissioner Bernard, I'm sorry.
Jim's fine. John?
Exactly.
You know, I don't have a whole lot to talk about. I am really excited about the lavender farm, which was many years through a process, a suggestion that the legislature could help us and folks could help us, and it ended up that we were the ones who solved the problem. And I look forward to more of those issues. I think that, you know, one thing about how we learn about veterans is our experience and our relationship with other people. I wasn't a veteran. Actually, amazingly enough, I didn't realize that Mac and I have something in common. I was blind in one eye up until a few years ago, and if you've ever seen The Christmas Story?
Oh.
So, I'll tell you mine. It's very odd, but I was in a tree fort looking through a knot hole, and a bee bee bounced off a tree into the knot hole and shattered the internal lens in my eye. So I spent about three months blind as a kid, because they didn't want your eye to move. And probably about 15 years ago, I had a lens implant so that now I, I'm not blind in my eye. But when the draft came, I was the very last draft in 1972, and I was really high up. My mother shot down to the, whatever that was, and changed me from whatever the highest rating to the lowest rating, because back then, you, I had to wear contacts to see it all. And if you, contacts back then were made of wood. I don't know if you know that. I'm kidding.
God, I'm going, how old is this man? I know you're the senior commissioner, but, okay.
So, you know, we learn about our vets through folks who come before us. And I told a story about, I, you know, I never, ever thought about that, those issues until, we had a homeless man in Milwaukee, and once I was elected as a commissioner, I found out all these things we could do for that man. And I worked to make that happen, and in the end, a homeless man who ended up having cancer and dying, but, but found through the county a place to live, and through our farmer's market, he had a job, and he was buried with a military funeral. And this is a man who probably would have just died on the street, had it not been for the hard work of the people at the county who knew where the resources were and were willing to help. And actually, in the end, you know, there was nobody, the funeral benefits for vets are terrible, absolutely terrible. I don't even know why they bother. The money, that is. The services are great. But in the end, the county had to pay for his funeral expenses, because he had nothing. And they stepped up and did that, and, and he, he died with honor. And, and his family, which he told us didn't exist, actually did exist, and many years later, came to my office, and I had his wallet in my desk drawer and gave it to the family, and some, and his veteran's card and many things. But, you know, the county really does a great job in reaching out. The Veterans Committee is working hard to make sure we address that. We're gonna do an additional homeless count, which I'm gonna have the honor of working on this year. And, you know, I, I'm excited about the hard work that we do. And I think vets should thank the county. Now, as far as the tax deduction for property taxes, that's a legislative fix. The county cannot fix that, and I'm certainly willing to go down and advocate for that in Salem. There are many veterans' bills that will be advocated for. Some have to do with the lottery, some with other things. But Clackamas County's committed to make sure that our veterans get the services they deserve. And if possible, you know, we, we are going to try and, you know, increase the opportunities to live a better life. So, you're a member of the Veterans Committee.
Yeah.
A fairly new member, and thank you for your service. Thank you, Mac, for your service.
Oh, no. Mac, now, you know, you had your, well, for, over four minutes. Let the commissioners have a couple, please. Commissioner Savis?
Well, I just want to express a little bit of gratitude for some movement this week we made on the auditors, the independent internal auditors position. You know, there's one thing that's sometimes a little frustrating as a commissioner, is when you realize or see something going on and you want to call it out or have it addressed, and, or you see, I call it the train coming. It's the light at the end of tunnel, a train, or it's something different. But anyhow, the point of the matter is that, you know, we're gonna be moving forward on the internal auditor position. I think this is a means of checks and balances to make sure that our expenditures or operations are being handled correctly. And having that independence piece is critically important, and so I do appreciate my colleagues that supported that on Tuesday. You know, there's times where we do have an ethics point process in the treasurer's office called Ethics Point, where if there's potential wrongdoing or, basically, an opportunity for, call it whistleblowing, to try to draw attention to something that might be wrong. And, you know, we follow up on those, but there are limits to that, and this internal auditor position will, will add that, that depth. Do you want to say one thing on the topic of the veterans thing? And I think that I learned in county college that it was one of our responsibilities. And I also learned that at the legislative level, that it's hard to draw attention to that. And unless there's advocates like us, county commissioners, who can bring that to the attention of our legislators through advocacy at the AOC, advocacy at, at NACO, and us, it's, if we don't make that noise, we don't make it here in front of us, in front of the public, on tape, wherever we go, and advocate for that, then we're gonna be less successful at the state level to help our veterans in the county. And, and I, I guess we will take the criticisms, I suppose, if people want to somehow associate that to a campaigning piece. Now, maybe that takes place, but I think that all my colleagues up here genuinely believe our advocacy is a responsibility of this county, and it is trying to draw greater attention at the state level for that. It's kind of disheartening sometimes when some of these veterans' bills make it, or fail the legislature, because there's just not a lot of attention. There's, when we try to bring that to the state level and try to bring it wherever we can and provide the services on the ground where they're needed. And so we'll continue to take the criticisms, but it's for our, and if that's the price to pay for advocating for the veterans, and that's, that, that's a duty that I will respectfully and dutifully honor and cherish, regardless of the criticisms.
Thank you. Yeah, I've told other people I was physically exempt, even though I was a state champion wrestler. I have a crooked arm. They didn't like that. So I tried multiple times to join, but my father was a Navy veteran, and certainly during the Vietnam War, I lost a neighbor, literally, and more than several of my friends throughout my life have suffered from loss of eyes, limbs, et cetera. So I think we're, we're all touched by veterans. There, veterans have families, you know, loved ones. In addition to that, just want to throw in a word for wounded warriors. You know, what a great program that, in fact, we have some arms of that here in Clackamas County that take veterans, wounded veterans, and teach them how to use a kayak, too, from our wonderful Barton Park all the way down to Clackamas. So kudos to them. I want to mention that locally filmed series, The Librarians, now, we went to an Electric Entertainment here a few months ago and got to go on the set, and ironically, right when we were on the set, the producer came out and, and I got my picture taken with him. Produced by Dean Devlin and others, it's a 10-episode season, and it starts December 7 on TNT. Now, there's Grimm and there's Portlandia, and this is, this is one of our own Clackamas County ones. You'll see scenes from Clackamas County and throughout the Portland metropolitan area, and, and the set, which we, like I say, got to see firsthand. So Devlin and Electric Entertainment filmed The Librarians for a soundstage in Clackamas County and throughout the communities. The show's production created hundreds of local full-time jobs, held almost exclusively by Oregonians, and infused, that's an amazing amount, almost $26 million into the local economy. So what a great success. So I look forward to seeing them. I was, a script was prepared for me, but on behalf of the commission in regards to what our county administrator mentioned, and that was that the murderer, executor, if you will, Grady Waxenfelder, has been caught. So on behalf of the commission, we'd like to offer our congratulations as well to the law enforcement agencies all across the nation, LAPD, and also our sheriff's office, who have already sent somebody down to ascertain the, the health of this gentleman. And frankly, I've been very involved with the prison system throughout Oregon, and been the volunteer of the year in the Coffee Creek Correctional Facility. And I know what prison is like, and I see what it does to people. And frankly, I used to be a death penalty advocate. But then, on the other hand, you know, prison is not a wonderful place, and it, and it's not used as punishment in Oregon anymore. It's used for rehabilitation, correction, and that's what it, what it should be. But I hope this man spends every waking hour in a box, and a small one, and he gets an hour to work out, if he will, because, you know, crime is crime, and there's white collar, and there's blue collar, and then there's heinous crimes like this one, an execution of a man just doing his duty. There was no threat to him. So on behalf of the commission, we are very happy that suspect's been caught also, and that he will be transferred up here for his due course. And should he ever get out of Oregon, California has a little, a couple of things for him, I'm sure, in store, having shot at police officers. The last thing I want to mention is that I missed last meeting. It was a day before Thanksgiving. I apologize. I had a bit of an emergency, but I just want to say how thankful I am for the outstanding staff we have here at Clackamas County, a very hard-working commission that gets a heck of a lot done. We have taken our criticism. But if you, you watch, and you watch the criticism that comes forward in the near future with this commission, it will not be for how well we operate, how we vote. It will be for what we vote for. Resisting Metro on multiple fronts. Resisting Metro on multiple fronts is probably not advised because they don't like it. Uh, a recent article in the Portland Tribune talked about, uh, the whole idea of congestion. How dare we ask for a lane on two oh five? As Commissioner Bernard has said, this is not Clackamas County's problem. This is a regional state and state problem, an interstate problem. And yet, Metro has the temerity to say, and their elected representatives from this county, as well as their metro planner and spokesman, says, "Why add additional lane? It'll just fill up." Well, it'll fill up with commerce, service, trucking, people. How dare us believe that we have the right to do that? And it affects everything in this county, especially our economy. So we will continue to do what we believe is right in the face of sometimes daunting adversaries. So ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the commission this day, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.